All right, it is 5:30, September 8th. For the rescheduled regular meeting of Bussaras City Council, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Terry, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Wireball.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
McKeever.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Potter.
Do we have a motion to?
I don't see them.
Do we have them?
Am I the only one that doesn't see them?
They weren't with the packet.
They weren't with the packet?
Apparently.
Okay, well then those are going to be tabled.
Right.
I apologize, that would have been my oversight. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
My name is Greg White, I live at 1125 Hillcrest Drive, and this is basically for Health and Safety Committee. I would like to talk to you about the West Southern Avenue, Bussaras International Raceway. I am surprised that some of the racing hasn't posted had signs on that street. The street is becoming worse with speeding. West Southern has the double yellow markings for no passing, yet drivers don't care about signs or double yellow. This starts from Mary Road all the way to Wyandotte Road and actually includes, goes around to Kiss Miller and on down. The posted speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Some are hidden, one is hidden by a tree, and that is at near 920 West Southern Avenue. You can't even read it. Or they're put along the Overwood Cemetery property, north side, by the cemetery fence. The south side are closer to the road, but the cemetery, the other ones towards the cemetery, are all the way against the black fence. Nobody can probably see them. Since Southern Road, West Southern Avenue Road is not in the greatest shape, and that basically starts at 1020, and is all torn up on that. One starts at the right, there goes for a quarter way. Many people walk this bike path, the bike pathway, walk away down through their, they ride bikes, they walk dogs, small children, it's used a lot. But the road is torn up, and it also is declining down. I see people all the time texting and driving and on their phones. What is the distance that signs must be placed for drivers to see from the center of the road? That's one of my questions. Two, why can't Bussaras Police Department come out and do a traffic enforcement on the street? And I need write tickets. State Patrol comes out and writes tickets, but I've never seen anybody ride a ticket or stop anybody. You know, I have seen Officer Walker out there one time on a Sunday, sitting down by Friendship Bridge Road. I have several drivers riding my rear end, pass me on a double yellow line, and last week, icing on the cake, a driver, two vehicles behind me, passed me and the other car on a double yellow just to get around us because they needed to go somewhere. What does it take before someone gets hurt or killed on this street? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something we should refer to Traffic Commission?
Traffic Commission can't do anything about speed complaints by themselves, but we can have a conversation with the police department about Mr. White's concerns and pass that on to them, which we will do.
Hi, my name is David Zach, I'm the relatively new president and CEO of the Crawford Partnership for Education and Economic Development. Good to be here. Per the contract and per how I like to do things in a communicative way, transparent way, I'm here to give you updates. I've been asked to keep it to five to 10 minutes. I tend to like what I do, I'm pretty passionate about it, so it's more challenging for me to keep it short and sweet, but I'm going to do that because I want to make sure that you have a chance to ask some questions. I see this as the beginning of a relationship, this is my 16th week on the job, and I'm really, really happy and pleased with the progress so far. I call it a good start, but I'm really grateful for the support that the city has provided for the public service of the administration council in terms of the things you're doing for the city, and I'm glad to update you quickly. I have just, for those I haven't met, I have had the chance and am working on meeting individually with every city council person, have done that with Dan and Kevin and Mark, as well as Aaron, but have not yet with Terry, Steve, and Brendan, but those are either have been arranged or going to be arranged. I want a chance to kind of hear your concerns and your priorities and what's important to you. Been doing economic development for 26 years, have a family of four girls, love to do what I do, love to spend time with my family and run, and if you get to know me, I'm kind of a wine enthusiast, kind of me in a nutshell. But there's three things that I have been focusing on and want to update you on for the first 16 weeks, and they include kind of the work we've done in relationships, the work we've done in projects, and the work we've done in marketing and communications. Relationships have been the first big thing, and the most important relationships to me coming in with what I call the Big Five, so that's the county commissioners, the city of Bussaras, City of Gallion, Village of Crestline, Village of New Washington. And I know Jeff came up to see me before I even started the job. He came up to see me in Tiffin, and that was, I think, a good kind of ambassador for the city, and I've been excited ever since. Since July 15th, I've been meeting on a regular scheduled basis with the city team, so with the mayor, with Jeff, and with John, and with Kelly, to talk about issues relevant to the city, to update them, and hear what's going on, and make sure we're coordinated and aligned with respective projects and initiatives. Most recently, we had an in-depth discussion about the airport, we had an in-depth discussion about Bussaras Water Line, and talked about those things as I'm working, and I found it really, really valuable and important to make that a regular thing, not just when there's a need. I've had, in terms of like meeting new people, I keep track partly through thank you notes, but I'm like 84 thank you notes in, which means that I've kind of met with 84 people, so I'm averaging, you know, about five a week of new people, keep doing that, that's very important. There's a ton of people get to know, and that's going to be for the first year, two years, and I think it's known people, and really it's a community, this community is really representative of its folks. Last but not least, I have been working very hard on the relationship with Regional Partnership. As you know, we're a local, you may know we're a local economic development, Bussaras is a local economic development agent, but we also work with the regional one that connects in with the state. The state jobs Ohio with the privatized economic development agency, and we have had them into the county visiting with existing manufacturers and our attraction project four times since I've started, and two of those have been in Bussaras. So many companies working on putting incentives packages together, those kinds of things. So I feel like the relationships, again, a good start, and going to continue down that path, again, without it, you don't, you don't make any progress. Projects, I'm excited to report, we kind of have our project management system up and running. Right now, we have 72 active projects, these are development projects, economic community workforce development projects, these are companies that exist, these companies that are looking to start up, companies that are looking to expand, and 31 of those 72 projects are in Bussaras. And we have four attraction projects currently considering Bussaras, five entrepreneurship projects, these are companies either looking to buy a business or start a business that we're working with, four real estate projects, which are people looking to invest in some kind of improve their real estate or start something, and five retention and expansion projects. So project activity is really good, tend to like numbers, so let me give you a couple of examples. So one new company, we codename everything, as you know from our weekly reports, so project change, million and a half, several jobs, looking at about 100 jobs, that's an attraction project. We showed them separate properties, they're trying to finalize a contract, we're in competition with a couple of the communities. So exciting to have that kind of activity, that was the lead originally generated, mayor said, hey, I heard about this, we went and pursued, kind of like Ahab, we take our spear out and go after the white whale. So it just pointed us in the right direction and we hunt. Another example of an existing business, we have an existing industrial business looking to invest $4 million potentially into their business, hire an additional 14 people at their shop. So we put together a local package, working with training incentives, working with the Ohio Maine's Jobz Office, National Enough, we put together a local incentive offer, looking at Enterprise Zone, which of course is contingent upon city council approval, but just to let them know the city's open to doing something like that, and so we'll see where that goes. But enough, those are good meat and potatoes kind of essential projects, jobs, investment into the city. And then we've had one, one example of an entrepreneurship project, we had someone wanting to start a service business, I'm not going to be more specific because it would, but what we did is we contacted an existing business in the city with somebody that was an owner that we'd heard about through our network, and we reached out to them and asked if they were at a time where they might want to sell, they weren't, so we're showing them additional retail properties. I know the owner, for example, we talked about the Great Southern, or was it Southern Life Shopping Center? So the Legos is on a Springfield, because I worked there, so needed to fix some of those things, but they're excited, want to invest, showed them that property, showed them a couple other properties for a small, maybe 1,000 to 2,000 square foot service business. So those are just some more concrete examples of what that 31 means. So excited about the project activity, and we keep getting in more every week, so it's good stuff. On the marketing and communications front, kind of the third thing I wanted to update you, in addition to kind of relationships and projects, we have, as you know, we're at team report number 15, so every week, trying to be very transparent to our stakeholders, what are we doing, not just the organization, but individually, so you know what we're up to. And so we're excited about that, that will continue, I think when I left Tiffin, we were at 325, so this is something that I'm very committed to, we have to do, it's something that is our accountability and transparency to the people that fund us, both in the public and private sectors. Second thing is we've put out seven press releases since I've started, we continue to jack that up. We put a caveat in there, just because we put out a release doesn't necessarily mean we're claiming credit for it or anything to do with it, but we're a content-based marketing organization, which means how do we enhance the reputation and image and brand of the city of Bussaras, of which four of those were Bussaras press releases, by the way, with businesses inside press releases, including Shoe Sensation, the acquisition, the recent purchase of Flower and Whisk, as well as the Land Bank, Cranford, Vicentine Park, et cetera, et cetera. But we have 25 stories generated that in print and online, and so we believe that that quote stories will not only make people inside realize the great things that are going on, but regionally in neighboring counties and throughout the neck of the woods, and that generates more activity and more interest, and so really, really important. On our social media, we kind of upped it to a level where we work to get active. I'm pleased to report that, you know, part of me coming, we had kind of three, this is one example, we're on multiple platforms, including Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, and Facebook, but we put out, I think, over 100 posts, 103 posts from the day I started until now, so we're doing at least a post a day, and we're just sharing the kinds of things that we're doing. So part of me coming, we were at about 2.8 thousand impressions for the year, we are at 98,000 impressions since then, additional impressions, so we're at about 100,000 impressions, just getting that going. Again, that's just sharing good news. We promote projects, we promote programs, we promote assets in the community, and we promote advantages of why you want to live or have business here. So pretty pleased with, again, a good start to our marketing and communication. Last I'd like to tell you, and I'm eight minutes and 43 seconds in, so I'm still on time, that what I'm planning to focus on for the next couple of months, we're going to really take a look at workforce development, so we've been very heavily involved in that as an organization with community opportunity, with facilitating the Business Advisory Council for all the schools, as well as really working recently to really integrate jobs and family services on the adult side with what we're doing. That's going to be a key focus for the next couple of months. In addition, kind of a second focus is going to be industrial site and spec building development, and we're going to look for opportunities for that, to increase product, as we call it, for the community, for businesses looking to come here. Last but not least, we're entering, as you all may know, our annual planning process, which we're establishing, and we put out a survey to our stakeholders to help us prioritize where can we get better, which should we start doing, stop doing, keep doing. That will then form, as we go to our board retreat on the 21st of this month, which will then give us direction, but it will be within the context of what we're hearing from our stakeholders, on setting the priorities and the plan of work that we hope will get approved along with appropriate budget, balanced budget, by the end of the year, so that we can start the year and everybody will have, you'll all have our scope of work and our specific battle plan for the year, so you'll be very clear on that. So that's kind of my nine-minute, 57-second update, and now we'll be quiet because I kept it to 10, and the open to any questions that anybody may have.
I have one.
Sure.
You said that we are in competition with other communities on a certain project. What can we do as council to help make our town more attractive?
I think, you know, my, my response would be, you know, I don't, I don't know enough to say, you know, I'm just beginning to get to know all the things that the city's doing and the city council have done, so I don't really feel in a position. I think as a general thing, continue to, you know, work on improving the economy and quality of life in this community, which is what you're dedicated to. So I keep doing what you're doing, and ask questions, and try to, we want to serve, so if you help direct us and let me know your priorities, if you have issues or have opportunities, you can help me that way. So anything that you might be thinking, feel free to reach out, my card's got my cellphone on there, yeah, that helps me.
Okay.
Because then I have a reader what's going on. So that would be my, my answer right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else?
No.
Thank you for the update.
I have a question, I just, I think about you just before. You sleep well at night?
I do.
You seem like you just got so much energy, and we appreciate that, with energy and enthusiasm you bring to this job, and thank you, I know you work a lot of hours and hope you rest well.
I do, I think balance is important, so I keep that in mind, and I think when you love what you do, it gives you energy. And so I love working with folks like you and the communities to make a better place, that makes me happy, but I do spend time with my family, and I don't work crazy, crazy hours. I work a lot, but you know, it's definitely within reason, because if I don't have a good family, then the rest of it is not going to matter.
Amen.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Zach.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
All right, I feel, before we go on, I do need to let you guys know that we will be going into executive session after the first reading of the proposed legislation. It is on the agenda at the end, but it needed to be moved up, so just FYI. So we have communications and petitions.
First one is a letter dated September 1, 2022, to Bussaras City Council, attention Megan Connolly. Dear Ms. Connolly, the purpose of this letter is to correct a statement that I made at the 7/19/2022 council meeting. During my talk on the three suits that I had filed against the Bussaras City Council, I stated in error that the third suit was for seven alleged violations of the Ohio Open Meetings Act. The correct number of alleged violations was 17. Thank you, Vicki Deschamps, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. And the second one is a letter from the Division of Liquor Control, showing that there's a request to transfer a liquor license from North Olmsted, Ohio, to the One Way Mark Incorporated, doing business as One Way Marks, 2121 East Mansfield Street, Bussaras, Ohio.
We get on way.
You're correct.
Yes.
On way, thank you.
All right, so I'll need a motion in a second to get that referred to, help the safety.
So moved.
Certainly.
I have a first by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have standing committee reports, plating?
I do not have anything at this time.
Public lands and buildings? Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
I have no report, but I did want to make a comment, because this kind of is with finance and I guess to the public. The last couple of weeks, I don't know if anyone's noticed, wants, watched the news and have, seen what's going on in Jackson, Mississippi. We lost the water, and that could have been Bussaras, Ohio, several years ago, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Roger Moore and Bill O'Rourke, who, two of the people that were kind of, Bill was trying to get money put back after we paid off the reservoir, trying to, he tried to help establish a fund for a new plant, which obviously we didn't have enough, but it might have helped a little bit. And Mayor Reeser, who, he was there to complete the project, and just on the aspect of finance, anyone, well, I guess Jeff may remember, well, and you remember what we went through, we, we got plans to make this, or put in this water plant, and then we had to drop it for a while because the police department was running around with cruisers with no transmissions and this and that. So actually, I'm just bringing this up because we made, well, they made, I guess, the right decision at that point to get this new water plant, it hurt, you know, it hurt a lot of people, they had to pay a little more, but just look at, look at Jackson, Mississippi, that could have been us if not for looking ahead. So now, which brings me to what we're, which brings me to the finance issue that, that Mayor Reeser had brought up, we need to do that again now, or we're going to look like maybe Detroit or somewhere like that if we don't get our finances, and it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt some people, but, but we're going to have to bite the bullet, and I just, I guess I just want to tell the public out there that, you know, we're not, we're not trying to be mean to them or anything, but we're just trying to look towards the future, just like past councils looked towards the future, Off-White looked towards the future and built the reservoir, you know, Roger Moore looked towards the future and built, you know, started the, the water plant, and now Mayor Reeser is trying to look towards the future to get our finances in order, so that's just my little stump speech there.
Thank you. Economic development?
I do not have anything.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was still thinking of Mr. Wireball's statement, thank you, I think that was very, very wide, but no, no report, no report right now.
And since there were no reports, pass voting. City officers' reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I have no formal report tonight, but I do want to thank Dan, of course, and then also, it's a very, it's kind of a difficult time to serve community, so I want to thank all you guys for stepping up and doing this. We have to certainly look long-term as well as short-term, and make some tough decisions sometimes, so appreciate everyone's service on this, and I'm not saying we agree all the time, we obviously don't, but I think we all have the best interest of our city and its residents in mind, so thank you, Madam President.
Sure. Do you want to read this?
Yeah, I have, yeah, it's true.
Okay.
Yeah, so Jeff's got some referrals, the landlord utility billing to Service Committee, and also referring a new siren, possible new siren at the wastewater treatment plant to health and safety and finance. If you are a deer hunter, you can sign up for the city's annual deer lottery, just call the mayor's office and leave your name, address, and phone number. Must have a valid hunting license, of course. We are going to, we'll hold a drawing, the lottery on September 19th at 10:00 a.m. in the mayor's office, so make sure you have everything ready to go before that. Couple Mill and Pave Streets yet to go, Shawburn Street and Mansfield Street are still on the list. Spooktacular is about five weeks away, that's going to be a very busy day in the city, we've got quite a few events that's, that are going to take place, are important events, and Spooktacular is one of them, it's always well-attended, and we invite all businesses, that's Saturday, October 15th, actually, is the date, four to seven at All Miller Park. All businesses, civic group, churches, athletic group, and schools to host a shelter or a tent, or just come out and see this amazing day. Kelly Patterson is, along with Jeff and some of the other folks, fine folks that work for the city are in charge. Call 562-676-67, extension 221, if you have any questions, we've got more information, or stop up the mayor's office. Last, there's, Woodland Drive started this week, contractor went door to door and provided a letter to all residents, let them know that the reconstruction of their street is beginning. But if you have any questions, they may call our contractor, RMH, at 419-668-2828. And that's all we have for that report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the mayor.
Sure, sorry.
What is the, this shouldn't be the service director, but what is the sewer problem on West Mansfield Street and?
Yes, well, there was some sewer issues that came up, they're going to be repaired, we got down there to do it, the water lines were in the way, so the water lines had to be shifted, and it's, it's a major project, so hopefully it's supposed to be done, I think, tomorrow, so.
Well, it's been taking a long time, though.
It was very complicated, very complicated, so you have the water lines right on top of the sewer line, that just, we couldn't get it done, so, according to the contractor, so.
Thank you.
We got plenty of infrastructure under, underground that's, you know, that's aging.
Yes.
Anybody else have anything for the service director or the mayor? What's a deer lottery?
Deer lottery is a city-owned property outside the city that, if they want to harvest their deer.
So, so we're doing a lottery to allow people?
Yes.
So you have a chance to hunt on a city-owned property outside of the city?
Yeah, yeah, we've done that for every year. I mean, I don't know when it started, but ever since I've been here, we've had one every year.
But, you know, not everybody grew up here, and not everybody's going to hunt their whole life, so it's very nice to have it explained.
Okay. Did that explain it? Is that, okay, do you have, are you going to sign up, is that why you're asking?
Wait, no, I'm not going to go through there.
Okay.
All right, so I have two referrals, first, the new siren out at the water treatment plant to help with safety and finance, may I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then I have the landlord utility billing to Service, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Sir?
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are to law director.
So I think you guys all got an email today pertaining to the Verizon Wireless Tower out back, but this afternoon I did get served with a lawsuit pertaining to the 2010 lease. I haven't really read it yet, but I guess that would cause me concern to pass an amendment to that lease until I at least figure out the, what the underlying viability of that lawsuit is. I think, just off the top of my head, I think we're outside the statute of limitations for the 2010 issue, but I don't know, I'll have to do more research, but.
So are you requesting that we pull that legislation?
So, did I?
May I have a motion to pull proposed legislation?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The proposed legislation 233-2022, the cell tower agreement has been tabled.
Other than that, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. Terry, could you take one and pass it along, since I didn't get these passed out earlier? I don't know if you were emailing a copy of the statement of position, deposition of last week. Yeah, okay, so I put a hard copy around for everybody in case you didn't get it. I didn't know it was a change in personnel. I also put hard copies of the income tax monthly comparisons and revenue tallies for your review, if you have any questions, I'm always available. And I have several referrals for tonight. Did everybody get a copy?
Yes.
All right, we need to create two new funds and categories for our victim advocate program for the 2022, '23 fiscal year, and also appropriate funds for the first quarter of the grant, which begins October 1st and runs through the end of the year. We also need to create a new fund. I'm kinda getting ahead of myself here. We know we have it, we don't have the paperwork yet, it's been advertised and whatever, that it's coming, and once it comes, we need to fulfill our obligations for this grant. So we need to create a new fund for the ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Funds, Safety Funds, granted to the police department, and appropriate funds for personal services. I would also like to request a change in the bill to add a deputy auditor position to my office to allow for training before I retire. Um, I am starting to get some interest. I received a call this afternoon. Uh, we just need to have something in place to cover the time between when I leave and the central committee can appoint someone to take my place in January. And so whether it's someone, a trainee coming in that will take over, or whether I have to appoint, uh, one of my staff to be able to sign checks on a temporary basis, but I'm going to do this position, so I'd like to refer that. I don't have any, uh, numbers for an additional person at this point, but I will bring that back later, but we need this in place. Um, and I've got a breakdown for my referrals for the committee meetings.
All right, so to create a new funding categories for the victim advocates program, I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. To create a new fund in categories for the ARPA 2020 Ohio Criminal Justice Safety Funds to finance, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A change in the bill to add a deputy auditor position to the auditor's office-
So moved.
-for to finance.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Um, I don't believe we got anything from the treasurer, the police chief or the fire chief, so I need a motion to accept. City officers' reports?
So moved.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are in a position to allow visitors to speak. Seeing none?
For the service committee?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
All right, proposed, uh, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 37-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $700 to the capital outlay line item within the police department category, and $5,414.49 to the personal services line item within the fire department category, with both line items and categories being within the Program One Security of Persons and Properties sub-paragraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated safety forces levy funds the sum of $12,000 to the materials and supplies line item within the police department category within the safety forces levy sub-paragraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated park and recreations land funds the sum of $20,000 to the personal services line item within the parks and playgrounds category within the parks and recreation land sub-paragraph. And finally, appropriating from the unappropriated waterworks funds the sum of $250,000 to the contractual services line item, and $39,000 to the materials and supplies line item, with both line items being within the filtration category within the waterworks sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 39-2022, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. And lastly, proposed resolution 232-2022, repealing resolution number 231-2022 and replacing with resolution number 232-2022, to authorize and direct the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts now to exceed $49,999.99 plus 10%, with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the splash park utilities. Finally, to authorize and direct the Bussaras City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declare emergency.
Point of borders?
Yeah.
Did we, I know I'm finding this, but I don't remember the repeal and replace. We were gonna have a meeting, then we canceled the meeting. I don't know if we ever had a meeting to repeal and replace this. I'm trying to look here through my emails, but.
So the original request for legislation was $49,999.99 plus 10%?
Right.
And so when we prepared the legislation, that plus 10% language was never included in it?
Okay.
So this would just be subsequently amending or correcting what was supposed to be originally passed. It's not changing what you guys authorized, it's just-
It didn't get tight.
Fixing.
Yeah, well, but, but we, I've got an email that said we were gonna have a special finance. Was that wrong, that we were to have a special finance committee to repeal and replace this on October 30th? And then it got canceled, I'm assuming, because we didn't have enough people coming.
October 30th?
Or not, August 30th, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna step out of bounds, you know?
No, you're good.
So, and that-
If we're okay, we're okay. I understand what you're saying, we messed up.
We have to go into executive session and then do that.
You're frustrating.
Yes, because it's never been referred or asked for legislation. Right, so I think that the request for a special meeting was put in, in order to fix that legislation, and then upon further review, it was determined that you guys had already asked for legislation with that 10% provision in it. So then it was never necessitated that we actually had that special meeting, uh, to approve that 10% provision, because that was what you originally asked for, and I just didn't do it right.
So we're just, we're just approving what-
What was originally approved, yes.
So that, that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And, yes, we have to, yes, go into executive session, and then I'll discuss the fraternal order of police thing was never, legislation was never requested, um, because we went to council, or committee meetings, uh, Mr. Wagner discussed that the, um, legislation would be brought up at the next full council meeting so that it could be discussed in executive session, and nobody had requested legislation, so that was-
Preemptive.
Preemptive, so we will fix that.
Okay.
But thank you.
So that one's tabled. All right. May I have a motion to accept these as a first reading, excluding 39-2022?
So moved.
Sire.
Who moved?
Martin.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at a time where the public may speak about the legislation that's been read. Seeing none? May I have a motion to go into executive session for contract information?
So moved.
So motion-
Wait a minute.
Motion to-
Wait.
Wait, motion and second to adjourn into executive session to review the employment of the Fraternal Order of Police captains, lieutenants, and patrol officers, and the Fraternal Order of Police dispatchers.
Thank you.
That's what we want. Bottom, two for scratch.
May I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session to review the employment of the FOP captains, lieutenants, and patrol officers, and the FOP dispatchers?
So moved.
Do, do we need to go in for something else as well? I mean, are we gonna go in?
We can't, we can't do two things at one time, I don't want to time.
That was my question.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young. Roll call, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are in executive session at 6:10. May I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. We are out of executive-
Now, if you roll calls, good, please. Myers, yes. Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
We are out of executive session at-
8:32.
6:32. Okay. So, legislation for consideration for the first time.
Well, first, we would need a motion and a second to excuse the rules, specifically 111.11 pertaining to origination of ordinances and resolutions, uh, the requirement that it comes out of committee, um, asking that the council as a whole be able to pass those two resolutions this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend 111.11, uh, which, uh, would excuse or suspend the rule to have legislation originate from a committee and let it be, uh, presented on the council floor.
So a second?
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consideration of legislation for the first time.
All right, we have proposed ordinance 40-2022, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. And then I propose ordinance 41-2022, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, pertaining to captains, lieutenants, and patrol officers, and declaring an emergency.
All right, refer back to originated committee or council. Proposed ordinance 37-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed resolution 232-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 40-2022, refer back to council as whole. Proposed ordinance 41-2022, refer back to council as whole. Committee report on pending legislation. Proposed ordinance 37-2022, finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 37-2022, uh, the appropriations. Finance is also favorable to proposed, oh, wait, yeah.
Yep.
Repeal and replace 231-2022. I think, was that it? Yeah.
Yep. So then we have proposed ordinances 40-2022 and 41-2022. How do we do that as, as a whole?
We'll just vote on it.
Okay.
This council hasn't yet taken a position on it.
Okay, all right. Further consideration of pending legislation. Ordinance number 37-2022 appropriations. For the second and third readings of the proposed ordinance 37-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 37-2022?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance 37-2022 is duly adopted. Proposed ordinance 40-2022. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 40-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 40-2022?
So moved.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance 40-2022 is duly adopted. Proposed ordinance 41-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 41-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, second by Mr. Wireball.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 41-2022?
So moved.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Proposed resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 41-20, let me start over. Ordinance 41-2022 is duly adopted. Resolution 232-2022, do I, for the second and third readings of the proposed resolution 232-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 232-2022?
So moved.
Sire.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Resolution 233.
233? Nope, we tabled that.
Oh, sorry, that was on my list.
Nope, it's fine.
Do we need an executive session on the clerk?
Yes. I had him laid out and I left him. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for consideration of employment for council clerk?
So moved.
Second?
I have a second by Ms. Sherrick, a sec, I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever, roll call.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are in executive session for consideration of employment at 6:40. It is 6:55, may I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick, roll call, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Do we have any new or miscellaneous business that we need to address?
Mr. Wireball?
That's you?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to make a referral to service for, to look at sewer rates for out-of-town customers.
I have a referral, may I have a motion, or a second, I'm sorry?
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Potter?
So.
Yes.
If we have to touch on executive session, don't we need to make a motion as to what our next step is there?
No, because we're not requesting any legislation.
May I have a special meeting?
It doesn't have to be done by a camp. You want to request a meeting?
Yeah, I would like to request, make a motion to request a special council meeting on the 14th, starting at 6:00 PM and?
Council chambers.
Council chambers. In regards to hiring a new council clerk, we'll need to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Potter?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have? I have four referrals?
I've got, I've got six referrals. We've got the landlord utility billing, billing to service, we've got the new siren at the wastewater treatment plant, the health and safety and finance, we've got the victim advocate fund creation to finance, we've got the ARPA 2022 criminal justice safety fund creation to finance, we've got the billlet to add a deputy auditor to finance, and we've got the sewer rates for out-of-time customers to service.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick, we are adjourned at?
6:52.
6:58.
The health and safety committee meeting for September 8th, 2022, and I will call health and safety to order at 7:02 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself as chair. First item for health and safety is public participation, is there any public participation for health and safety? Seeing none, next item up is approval of your minutes from the August 25th, 2022, regular health and safety committee meeting that are in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
First by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion carries. Any open projects for health and safety? As far as just referral for the new siren, is that for next time, or do you have information tonight?
I took one tonight.
Have it, sir.
They've brought our attention that there are certain parts of the city have kind of weak signals for alarms, tornado and bad weather alarms, especially out in the newer areas, past Huggins, the southeast part of the city. And we are proposing to install a new siren at the wastewater treatment plant that'll cover that portion of town and be able to be heard. Actually, I have people out there while it's been going on, it's barely audible. So we think it'd be in our best interest and the citizens' best interest to be, have some better form of protection, especially on the western side of town like that.
Do you have a cost estimate yet?
Yes, we do. Bender Communications does all our, all of our work for the city, they have an estimate of $31,022.
And do we have an idea of where that money will come from?
We were, we were going to propose that you would consider using some of the ARPA funds for that, since it's an unusual expense and also, you know, is an investment in the city. So we, I think we have, what, $670,000 in that fund? So, to use $30,022. That includes labor. Actual equipment price is $23,840. Labor is $7,182. So we're a little bit over $31,022. And Bender Communications does excellent work.
All right, so committee, your thoughts?
It's needed. I've known, I know you can't hear it out there.
Yeah, well, I know Terry and myself, living in that corner of town, can attest to that, and Dan, same. If the wind's blowing right and you got the window cracked on the house, you can sometimes hear the other ones.
Yeah.
So. You guys content with where the money's coming from and the cost?
Yeah, yeah, as long as we get the money, we're good.
All right, so mayor, what do you say the cost is that we should request the legislation?
$31,022.
Do we need to add any for overage, or is that a solid number?
I think that's a solid number.
$22,000, sure.
I'll make a motion.
Is that, wait, is it, that's not something that needs to go up?
Oh, you're going to ask that question?
It's under $50,000.
Under $50,000.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, request this legislation as an emergency.
First by Mr. McKeever?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wireball, as an emergency? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? That motion carries. All right. Any other open projects that you guys want to discuss tonight? All right, any public participation for health and safety? Hearing none, I will adjourn at 7:06 PM. The finance committee meeting for September 8th, 2022.
I'll call the finance meeting to order at 7:07 PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, chair. Is there any public participation for finance committee? If not, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from August 25th, 2022, the regular finance committee meeting. We've looked those over, we're going to get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion, Terry's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
So we approve the minutes. We go into, I am by the seat of my pants here right here.
You want me to rattle off the referrals I have here?
She did from here. I guess victim advocate program, we just need to, I guess we just need to get a motion to?
Create these funds?
Create these line items.
I've got a list here for the fund creation.
Okay.
Fund 266, that's the ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Fund. That is a grant in the police department for officers and dispatch. And a personal services item, because this will all go to salaries and benefits. And then for the crime victims assistance grant, it'll be Fund 283, 2023, crime victims assistance in 7728, which is the victim advocate position. And this will be for personal services and materials and supplies, two categories. And then the other grant, it will be Fund 284, 2023, victims of crime act, again, under 7728, victim advocate, and we need a personal services line item for that.
I'll make the motion to create such fund.
I'll second that.
Is, are we all in favor?
Sure.
Say so.
Aye.
Aye.
If not?
Terry says sure.
Okay. Oh, you say sure.
Okay, then. The appropriations?
Okay, yeah.
And the ARPA fund that we've just created, we can do appropriate $334,000, this is to the police department, personal services, this is for funding for two police officers, and retention bonuses for the current officers and dispatch. Then Fund 283, the 2023 crime victims assistance grant, for the first quarter, we'll need to appropriate $10,590, it'll be $10,340 to personal services and $250 to materials and supplies. And then Fund 284, 2023 victims of crime act, for the first quarter, will be $5,000 to victim advocate and personal services. And then you just approved another appropriation, and I'll need to have this added to the list and given to the law clerk for that, what was it, $31,022?
Oh, right.
And that'll come out of the ARPA grant, Fund 271. I may need some new categories for that, because I only have police and fire in there right now.
You'll have to create that.
I'll have to create that, yeah.
I'll get it tomorrow.
And so if you're going to create that, should we not have a special meeting before the next council meeting for finance to approve that?
Yeah, I'll just be creating the department, which will probably need government services and outside contracts, is what I would need. So if you approve that? And I'll just get it typed up for them to take care of it.
If you need care.
It's up to you.
Right, we can, we can approve it. You doing that, we'll see it before we vote on it.
Right, right.
So there's no? So, okay, so, is it, would that be two separate ones, or is that?
Yeah, but actually, since I have to create those line items, I would imagine we can do that in the creation of the funds and items in that same piece?
Yes.
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 So those categories will be created?
Under this.
With the other funds, and then the appropriation will be added to this one. So we won't have to do additional pieces of legislation.
Right.
It's added what we add.
So?
So all three of the fund creation go under one piece?
Right. Would it be four? No.
There's four. She's saying the fourth one for the tower.
For the?
Siren.
Siren.
I've got the siren, the victim advocate fund, the criminal justice safety fund.
And the ARPA, Ohio Criminal Justice.
That's one of the three.
The criminal victims assistance and the criminal, the victims of crime act.
Yep.
Yeah, those are two separate funds.
So there's four total. I'll make a motion for all four of those appropriations as an emergency.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we've got that. So now we're on to billlet change for the deputy auditor.
Right, so I copied the first page of the current ordinance, which is 42 dash 2020, I think it was the last time we amended this. So this will need to be amended in section A, under auditor slash income tax office, and we need to add one deputy auditor. And I think the split for that should be the same as what we have for the auditor clerks, 20% from each.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is not, we're actually not hiring someone, we're just?
Creating.
Creating someone to take your place when you?
Right. In my mind, this is a temporary position until someone is actually appointed and can take over. And I'm, and I'm hoping, thinking that perhaps the budget, since it's going to be split five ways, that the budget we currently have may cover this, because this person may only be here, I mean, under this, before they take over from me?
Right.
For just, you know, a few months, a couple months or so.
Okay. Other, anything else? I see, I guess we, we still need to have this discussion on the, about the finances, I see the, we've got the reduced credit information again, so I think, did you all get that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so that over?
Mayor, did I give you one of those?
No.
Sorry!
That's all right.
I think I had another one in here.
Okay. I mean, we just have to have that discussion at some point, but I don't know if it's should be today, yes?
I think we said that, the last time we discussed it, we were going to try to have a special meeting just for that.
Right. Just to talk it over.
Yeah.
Right, so just hang on to that, if you can, I guess. So we can save a little paper. But I think we got that before.
Yes, this is what Kelly was learning on, I just got it before class today, so I haven't studied it real hard and stuff. But it shows you how much credit we've given out, depending on the tax rate that people are paying in other cities.
Thank you.
And you can see that we give a lot of credit under that 2% tax rate that they're paying someplace else. I mean, it's $631,000. Now, these figures, Kelly actually went through every return for tax year 2020 to calculate this. And basically, because we don't have all the 2021 returns in yet, because if someone has an extension, they're not due till October. And she even followed into the returns that came in this year for 2020 that were late. So she took every one of these returns into consideration. I mean, I couldn't believe she went through all this. But this is a shifting pattern, because people change jobs, or they move in, or they move out, or they change jobs, or they have six or seven W-2s in different places. And so it's not something that you can just look at and say, well, this is what we're going to bring in, because every return is different, every situation is different. And, and at the bottom, where she shows, you know, the credit, this is number of returns, not the number of people. This is based on the actual returns.
Could be a family of five, or?
Right, right. So it's a lot to look at. On the second page, if you look at that, you'll see how much we've submitted for collection to the attorney general's office, and how much we've received so far. Now, starting with tax year 2021, the attorney general can also claim the federal refunds. Prior to '21, they could not, they could only take from state refunds. So we may see this number increase, but, you know, we'd be in better shape if everybody actually paid the tax they owe us.
Oh, yeah.
Filed and paid.
Yeah, there's a new fire truck here.
Yeah. So, anyway, this was very helpful.
Yeah.
And I really want to thank Jerry Goble for the job she did on that article that was in Tuesday, because she, and she gone over it with me on the phone last week, and she did an excellent job, and just explained all the different variables in there and what happened. She didn't have this. We wanted this to come to you ahead of time, and Kelly wasn't done with it until just before 5:00 o'clock today, but, yeah, so you guys need to study it and, and see what you want to do.
Right.
Here again, whatever we do will not help our coffers until 2020.
Right, so we can't be dragging our feet too long, but, yeah, right. The other thing is, right, with Jerry's article, it's, it's good to let the people know that, you know, one, we're trying to work on it, and two, there is a, there's a problem that, you know, it's not?
And this is a problem that is pretty much out of our control.
Right, right, I guess.
And I know, you know, there's a lot of people that think, well, if you just bring more jobs, or if you just do this, well, you can't snap your fingers and do that.
We've got, we've got people here that can't get people to work, so.
Right, right. And I think our, our new partnership person is, is really on top of everything. So I think he's going to be a great asset to us.
Yes, yes, but we've had a discussion about some of that, so I think he will. Yes, yes, Bob, we've had a discussion about some of that, so I think he will. So finance, many, we will look at this. Uh, any, anything else? And I've got, I'll get those open projects out to you guys, uh, and the new clerk when we get her, her or him, I guess.
New clerk.
Them.
Them, oh, them.
You heard him, her.
Any other public participation for finance? If not, I will adjourn at seven twenty P M.
This is the September eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
Calling the September eighth, twenty twenty-two Committee Meeting for Public Lands and Buildings to order at seven twenty-two P M. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, myself Chair, Brenton Potter is absent this evening. First, do we have any public participation? Okay, seeing none, um, uh, asking if there's a motion for the approval of minutes from August twenty-fifth?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Myers, with a second by Wireball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Do we have any open projects? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any other public participation? All right, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-three P M.
This is the September eighth, two thousand twenty-two Plating Committee Meeting.
Okay, I will call plating to order at seven twenty-four P M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself Chair. Is there any public participation? None approaching? So I need the approval of the August twenty-fifth minutes, but there is a correction that needs to be made before we approve it. Scrolling to it. Uh, in step number three, approval of minutes. Uh, minutes were presented for the August fourth, twenty twenty-two Regular Plating Committee Meeting. Well, I can't make a motion. So I do believe Kevin made a motion to accept the minutes with a second from Terry, if I'm not mistaken. Correct me if I'm wrong, members?
I think so.
Okay, well, with those, with those, I need a motion to make those corrections.
There's also, there's another, another correction that's been made on the August fourth, when, uh, McKeever made the motion to.
Yeah.
And Young seconded, and he's not on this committee. It says Young.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying to correct. I, I'm saying that.
It says August first one.
I, I said, well, I'm sorry. August fourth.
Fourth, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. McKeever?
Yes.
I think Ms. Sherrick is also under, uncovered something else.
This is your Thursday, August twenty-fifth minutes?
Yeah.
Where you voted in the August fourth minutes, but if you look at your heading. It says August fourth still yet on the top?
Says Thursday, August fourth.
It should be the twenty-fifth.
And that needs corrected. So.
I'll move to approve with all the corrections that have been pointed out.
I'll say.
Okay, with the corrections of August twenty-fifth and also changing the names to Myers and Spiegel for the motion in a second, uh, if there's no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Uh, any open projects that you want to discuss? We'll have to work on, try and get that. If not, if you have nothing else on the open projects, uh, any public participation? None being, I will adjourn plating at seven twenty-seven P M.
This is the September eighth, two thousand twenty-two Economic Development Committee.
Okay, I will call Economic Development to order at seven twenty-seven P M. Members present, C. Aaron Sherrick, Steve Young, Brenton Potter, the Chair is absent, and I am Acting Chair. Any public participation for Economic Development? None. I need, you see before you the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two Regular Economic Development Committee Meeting Minutes?
Change the date on that too, also, this is the fourth on top.
Okay. We need to change the date on the title. If there's, with those, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, if there's no other discussions with the correction of the title, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any open projects? Not, we will, any public participation? We will adjourn at seven twenty-nine P M.
This is the September eighth, two thousand twenty-two Service Committee.
I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting to order at seven twenty-eight.
Twenty.
Seven twenty-nine. Seven twenty-nine P M. Members present, Steve Young, C. Aaron Sherrick, Brenton Potter. He's absent, and myself is Chair. Like to open the floor up for public participation from anybody?
Your address, please.
Thirteen twenty-nine Nevada Winfield Road, Tussars. In January of this year, I got on my property taxes for an address, five oh seven West Mary Street, Tussars, five hundred and fifty-eight sixty-three. I called, uh, Mike Downwater Department. He said it was for unpaid water bills. I said, well, send me copy of what you did, what made it up. Goes back to January of twenty twenty. I called him back and I said, why didn't you shut it off? Well, the state wouldn't let us. I said, send the bill to the state then. Why am I paying it? So. He said, well, he said, I can't do anything about it. So I called Jeff Wagner numerous times. Had a hard time getting any calls back. When he finally did call me back, and this is several months later, he says, uh, well, he said, I'll look into it. And I said, well, you've got COVID money, why don't you use that? Well, I have to look and see how it's appropriated. I said, okay. And I didn't hear anything back for another month, so I kept, start calling again. And he finally called me back and he said, well, I have to talk to Jeff Reiser. In the meantime, I talked to, uh, Kevin Myers. Kevin Myers looked into it. He went down and talked to Mike. And he found out that I was the only one that was done to. So I talked to Jeff Wagner again. He said, that's when he said he'd talk to Jeff Reiser. And Jeff Reiser called me a couple of weeks ago or so. Said that, uh, they couldn't do anything about it because the water bill was in my name. I said, no, what in my name? It's never been in my name. Oh, okay, well, I have to look into it. Well, then last week, Jeff Wagner calls me, said I need to show up to the Service Committee meeting. He said, because we can't do anything. It's up to the Service Committee. Because I was told by Jeff Reiser that the city didn't get any COVID money, because I asked him the same question.
What, uh, whose name was it in? What wasn't in your name?
Here's what. Here's what, um, Mike sent me that showed, uh, Davina Frank is one of them. Another one was, uh, shoot, Brian Markley.
What do these have to do with yours, with your bill? Do you know that, Mayor? Anything? I mean, what does this, uh, Brian Markley have to do?
He's the property owner, so they assess his real estate taxes.
Well, he owes you unpaid bills.
I got you, I got you.
Should have been shut off sometime in there.
Well. You owe how much then? Uh, it's only real estate taxes.
Five hundred and fifty-eight sixty-three.
I don't know what we can do about it. I really don't. We, Mark, have you ever had anything on this? You know, uh, being on council, this is my first year on this. I do not know.
You can't speak to it because he's not on your, he's not on your committee.
You can ask for it, though. He gave it to Penny or Kevin to it.
Mr. Harris is done. I, I, I'll like to speak. Are you done for the moment?
Yeah.
All right.
And I do not know that much about, we've never had this happen, right, for what, uh, proceeding of on it?
Kevin Myers, four twenty-one West Oakwood Avenue. Um, I also want to clarify, I'm not on this committee, so I'm speaking as a citizen here. Um, I spoke with Mr. Harris multiple times as a council member on this. And we back, go back before this, you know, we had looked at this, um, in previous council sessions. And, uh, Rob Ratliff even reached out to the Ohio Attorney General's Office to get a ruling where too many of us on council were landowners, property owners, landlords. So we weren't able to rule on it because it would be ruling in our favor. And so we had to drop that. I've long been an outspoken critic of this. It's a state law that allows the property owner to be assessed when his tenant doesn't pay their bill. Which, you know, my opinion doesn't matter, but I think it's a crummy law. Because his, he took the initiative to make sure he had separate shut offs. His tenants are the ones that had the water bill. They're the ones that didn't pay their bill. That's not his fault. You know, no other business in the world does that. If his tenant didn't pay their AT&T cell phone bill, it doesn't go to him. And so, what, and he's right. The question comes up, why didn't we shut them off, which we normally would have. But during, during the COVID time, we were prohibited as a municipality from doing those shut offs. That makes this a very unique situation. In this instance, Mr. Harris is the only one that I was able to find out, because I asked the same question. He's the only one that I know of that's a property owner that had these assessed to him. Which, which makes it a unique situation. It's not like if you decide that you want to reimburse him, you're not going to have a line of fifty other people in here wanting to be reimbursed. I, I think the right thing to do is reimburse his money. I, I just, I really feel strongly about that, you know? That that's, he, he did his job, you know? Well, should he have picked a better tenant? How in the world would he have known that that tenant was or wasn't going to pay their bill?
I don't know.
And, yeah, and I don't, I don't know, you know, I, I still maintain, I think we could do more as a city to go after the people that aren't paying their bills, but when, when the state law allows us to just assess that to him, well, that's easy, it's done. And I, I think, I'd rather see us take stronger, uh, measures to go after the people that generated the bill. And not just say, well, the law says I can go after the property owner. So I just, I urge you to consider reimbursing him for this instance.
I have another comment, too.
I have a question, real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris. I'll go back up to the podium, please.
I have another comment. I had to ask the Water Department, well, what if some of these people come in and pay that after they've, you know, put it on my property tax? Well, you're not going to get it back. Well, why not? I paid it. And that's what I was told.
So there was nobody else who didn't pay their bill? Just these two people? That's my question.
I, I don't know if that's true or not. That's, I stated I, I.
Okay, so we need to know who all got these assessed and, and over this period, I mean.
I can, uh, have Mike get that information.
That would be amazing, because we're, we're missing a whole lot of information in this.
Mr. Chairman, we were, are you having time, you know, because of the regulations or COVID, we couldn't shut it. It was an unfortunate situation, not only for that, but also for non-paying of lands. So it was a tough time for landlords, obviously. As a response to Gary's statement that we didn't get COVID money, like, in our conversation, I, I wasn't clear, we did get COVID money. We got about nine hundred thousand dollars of COVID money. But, um, since the stipulations for using COVID money for unpaid utility bills were such that we had to give the money to the person who didn't pay the bill first, and they were in no obligation to pay that bill. So we decided, the administration decided that was too risky. And that's what I was trying to get through to you, you know? So we did get COVID money, we just didn't, you know, feel that it was.
One, and the Service Director's, uh, report, he's referring that to the Service Committee at, for us to address at a later time, probably the next committee meeting, so that we can, we can find out a little more information on it, so.
So, uh, so, excuse me again, what information do you want me to get besides the history?
Well, I want to get, just to see if anybody else in the city had, had that addressed to them, or that assessed to them under taxes, any more landlords. If there is out there, please, please let us know if you've got assessed that amount.
Well, and amount.
And amount, period, yeah. So.
For the same reason.
Going back to Mr. Harris, uh, I think, uh, if you can wait till the next committee meeting, when we can discuss this a little bit more, get a little more information on it. And we'll make a decision at that time for you, okay? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harris, that's on September twenty-second.
Yes, September twenty-second.
September twenty-two.
Yes, thank you. Is that okay with everybody else right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Do you hear?
A hundred percent.
Okay. Yes, uh. Any more?
Hi, my, my name is Greg White, eleven, eleven twenty-five Hillcrest Drive, and I want to talk to you guys about the Hillcrest Drive project. What a mess the second time around. Concrete people left debris all over the street. This is even after they were done. They messed up some of the new pavement on the street also. I called several council members to come out and look at this, at that time, and I thank you, all of you that came out. I appreciate it and showed you firsthand what I was talking about. They saw firsthand what is going on. I showed them also that only one resident got new curbs and gutters replaced on their street. I was told that they, I was told that, what I believe to be true, that this is nothing but favoritism to the property owner. Other residents had the same problem. I did get the text message from the Safety Service Director that because they were quote-unquote, water could get under the street. In my book, that's a bunch of BS. Sorry to say that. Other residents have the same or worse conditions than that resident had. Most of their, how I said, most of their concrete was topical. I have pictures. Okay? Other residents on this street have huge holes next to the new asphalt that aren't even sealed. So if you can tell me that water can't get into the street from huge chunks of concrete next to the street versus some topical, topical spolting on the concrete, come on out. I'll show you everything. Let's see, the other residents, you know, can't get theirs done either. I feel the city doesn't care about its residents or how streets and curbs and gutters are fixed. Also found out, too, that two more streets for next year's projects are being done this year with money from projects from this year. I think the city needs to come out and check up on the quality of work that's being done. Okay? Even after they're done. Somebody needs to come out before you guys pay for these people, because this is ridiculous. This is the second time I've been in front of council to tell you guys that people leave messes. The first mess was bad enough. You know that for a fact, Terry.
I saw it.
You saw it?
Yep.
All that grinding's in everybody's driveway, and nobody gave a you-know-what, okay? I did come into and thank the city for bringing the sweeper out and the guy with the blower. But that is terrible. Okay? This time, you came out, well, you didn't come out, but two other council.
I drove all through.
Okay?
I saw it.
You saw it. It was everywhere. In the gutters, it was all over the streets. People come out there to walk. They're dogs. Kids ride bicycles out there because it's a safe neighborhood, because they like to go over to Friendship Bridge, or over to the sidewalks on the cemetery. Okay? But when a contractor leaves that big of a mess again, come on, somebody's got to come out and do something. Seriously, please some, before you pay for it. I got to agree with this quote that someone told me, what do you expect from a shoe salesman and a bag boy? Thank you.
I have a question. So you, the entire street was done, only one house had been hurt?
Yeah, only one. Only one resident got new curbs and gutters. And I have pictures of, of the four. So it was mostly topical, okay? Yes, there was some spolting, not going to lie to you. My attorney knows, I ain't going to lie.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm going to tell you to come out. I, I showed him firsthand everything, and the other council members that came out showed it firsthand, too. And I thank every one of them for coming out, because it was a mess again. Okay? I mean, we're talking about huge chunks of concrete in the middle of the street. If some kid been riding their bicycle, car went by, went by, caught it on a tire, would somebody get hurt? Possibility. But I even showed a couple of council members where they even tore it up with their little bobcats. I mean, there was marks in brand-new asphalt that are dug this deep into the asphalt already. Brand-new content of bad new asphalt dug in already, because I think they were playing on their bobcats out there, trying to do spinny dommets. Because you can see the marks in the road. I mean, there's some nice gouges. People know, Mark knows, Dan knows. People know, Mark knows, Dan knows, I'm not going to lie, I invited them out to take a look. This is ridiculous, okay?
Who was the contractor?
I don't know who the contractor, but I'll tell you what, project's still not done. It's.
Was it driven?
I do not know who it was. Do you know who it was, Greg?
No, I don't. I know, I know that.
We'll check that out.
What, I know what I know and what I saw. And I took pictures of some stuff, because I wanted some evidence that this is the way it was and stuff like that. But, you know, it's, I don't think the project's done. You know, I came Tuesday night, we kind of talked off record, and I appreciate that. But I don't think it's still done, because not everything's seal-coated out there or sealed around all the concrete out there yet. So, it's still exposed.
We'll, we'll check into that, Mark.
I appreciate it, I really do. Hey, once again.
We'll see who the contractor is on it.
Yeah. But, I mean, I do want to thank the city for coming out again, okay? Bringing the sweeper out again to clean up someone else's mess, once again. I don't think the city should have to do that. I think that the contractors should have came out and cleaned everything up. But I do thank the city for coming out, at least coming out and sweeping up the debris up the street, instead of us neighbors having to go out there and try to clean up a mess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, do we, do we have an inspector?
Do we, do we have one here, an inspector that goes out and checks?
So, we just.
No, we, we don't.
So, basically, in my business, before we pay a bill, we make sure the services are the way that I want it. So, I don't know how we're basically writing off a blank check and not even seeing it.
We don't do that.
But you haven't looked at it, though.
We haven't looked at what?
Apparently, his road.
It just happened, you know?
It just happened last week.
It hasn't been built for us. We go back and look at these places, and we have punch-out lists, and we done, John Dunn does that.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what I asked, was an auditor, and you said no.
So, Jeff Dunn is inspecting it.
Jeff Dunn's our auditor, though. Right?
Inspector.
It's not like this is, it's not like this has been an ongoing issue.
I understand, I understand, but my question was, did we have somebody to look at it? And you said no, but now we do.
We do.
That's what I want to make sure, is somebody is actually looking at this process.
The people that are contractors on those have been long, long-time contractors for us, who have done a good job.
Yeah, okay.
Typically. This happened on a weekend, they typically come back the next day, do that, unfortunately, that's, you know, there was some, but we, you know, we've done, we spent millions and millions of dollars for these contractors, and this is, since I've been here eight years, this is the very first time I had anybody come here, especially come and insult being Jeff Wagner such as, you know, that was completely uncalled for. I'll go on record as saying that. That bag boy, or whatever you call him, he, he was the one that got the street sweeper out there for you immediately.
But it's not my quote, it's a quote from somebody else.
Yeah, okay, well, obviously, it's your quote.
No, it's not.
He's agreeing with it.
It's a quote from somebody else, Mayor.
You have to understand, you're unquoting someone else who told me that quote. How dumb do you think we are?
Let's move forward. Okay, never mind, let's don't get into it here. But, but what Jeff told me was, as far as the curbs go, that they ran out of money. They don't have all the money to do it with, and they were, it was supposed to have been in the contract, but they didn't have the money to do it, and they, they will look at it if they have money left or anything else in the next few, in a year or so, is what he told me. So, I'm going to believe what Jeff says to me, so, always have, so, that's what he said.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He's a man of integrity. Very, very busy. He cares about these people. He has a retail background, as I do, and I think it makes a big difference of how you look at the things that, how we serve people.
I agree.
Things can go wrong, they do. But, you know, we are very best, we work, we rely on other people, and we don't need to come in here and insult.
Okay. Okay. Move on forward. Move on. Does anybody else have any, uh, public participation? Okay, seeing none, let's move to approve the minutes of the August 25th meeting of the Regular Service Committee meeting.
Let's check them.
Yeah. Check the service, check them, make sure they're done right. We never know. Yeah, it's plating, let's go to the next one.
I'll make a motion to accept the August 25th minute.
Got a motion from Steve to accept, I need a second.
A second.
Aaron seconds them. All those in favor, vote usual sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, open projects, we discussed a lot of those last meeting. Is any more that anybody needs to discuss? Seeing none, any more public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:50 PM. Thank you.